Now it's seven o'clock, we're in session. First item of business, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or declarations?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can we move item L up the agenda to maybe after item G? The town lots for the public?
We'll move L after G. Is that a motion, Tom?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Next, agenda presentation comment period, 20 minutes. Public presentation time is intended as an opportunity for the public to get attention on relevant issues and not intended as a question and answer period. Ms. Mounds, is anyone signed?
No, sign off the agenda.
Is there anyone here who would care to speak? Anyone here who would care to speak at this time? If not, this public presentation period is over. Next is to report, board members. Mr. Fox.
Oh, just like to report that I attended the building committee meeting and the Warren County Health and Human Services Complex renovation update. The residential space is being renovated. Also, the courtroom, courtyard window replacement is taking place right there. And school maintenance design is continuing on with the, with the school board giving input on that now. The roof, the roofing project for the north Warren apartment, it's not been started yet and that'll be a metal roof and that's to begin soon. The signage replacement throughout this building is now complete. And on the solid waste, the Shenandoah Farms site plan, it continues to go forward with the planning of it. And the transfer station, station maintenance building is still, is still planned to be built, but it'll be a couple of years on that yet. And the transfer station asphalt repair has been completed up there. The Thompson kissing rack is now completely completed. The Front Royal Airport, the obstruction removal is just about complete. There is one hole that we need a right-of-way to finish up that project. The Rivermont Farm and Rescue Company, the stabilization is ongoing. There is some mold and some concerns about that property. The farm rescue training for self-aid is unfolded. It's not working out the way that they've been planning with the storage containers that they've been planning for that. The, the remaining lay-down area is now open to be renovated, that there was a prospect. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes, I understand that our loans that we did with the refinancing of loans, with the bonds that we did, do we have a figure of how much we saved on that?
Yes, sir, I do.
How much is that?
For the, for the county's bonds, the final ended up being five million, two twenty-one, one forty-six fifty-one. And the RSW Regional Jail, of which Warren County will see about half that in savings, was six million, forty-seven thousand, eight fifty-three twelve.
So total around eleven million, let's say, okay. I wasn't, I was gonna wait, or is Mr. Parsons, are you, are you gonna speak anytime during this, make the presentation or?
I don't believe I'm gonna be a check.
Okay. I had reached out to Mr. Parsons and I was wanting to find out why the EDA made a ten million dollar loan to IT Federal. And so far, not gotten an answer back. And Mr. Parsons, I don't wanna speak for you, but if you wanna come, but that you said you're unaware as well. And I have some correspondence, Mr. Edgar and myself, we're jointly trying to figure out why this loan was made. And on nine fifteen, twenty fifteen, nine fourteen, September fourteenth, twenty fifteen, town front row loan, ten million dollars for one month, DDA dot IT Federal project as a bridge loan, start from structures. And apparently, and that was passed unanimously by the town council. And I wasn't on the town council then, I wasn't on board supervisors, I was on no board at that point. This loan apparently was eventually extended to three months and was paid back when the EDA had paid the ten million dollar loan from First Bank and Trust of Lebanon, Virginia. And that was on twelve fifteen, twenty fifteen. And apparently, thus the loan took place the next day, twenty sixteen, twelve sixteen fifteen. And I would like to, I'd like to find out why was that loan made? What was the purpose of the loan? Why, why did the EDA give ten million dollars to IT Federal? I'd like to have an answer. And then later, which I can't get answered either, is apparently the, the EDA has a ten million dollar loan for First Bank and Trust and apparently the EDA is losing money on that loan. And I would like to have an answer on that. That, that the interest rate, the loan has an interest rate, split interest rate was given me a four point three five percent. I'd like to have that verified as accurate or not, with a balance due after seven years as far as a monthly payment of around forty thousand. Loan secured by DDA trust on one hundred and seventeen acres of former Abtech site is not given to IT Federal. It's also secured by promissory note that was endorsed over First Bank and Trust by the EDA. After seven years, the principal balance due will be approximately nine million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So according to his accounting, the difference in interest rates, the EDA will be in the whole approximately one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand after seven years. And I, I'd like to have, if that's accurate, that are we, do, do the EDA give a loan rate cheaper to Pertrant than what they're paying on the interest? Is that pretty clear, Senator?
I've, I've asked our accountants to look into that. I forwarded to you the, the promissory note and the distribution of the funds. We received forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars a month from Pertrant. Our loan payment is exactly forty thousand dollars even. I don't, I don't know why that is. I don't know what the interest, and our interest rate, I believe it is four point three five percent for First Bank and Trust currently. I don't know what the other interest rate is. I'm, I'm, I've asked for this information and I just haven't gotten it back yet. I have no idea why the loan was made.
Right, and I'm not making a.
I've asked people all over, tell us that paper, no one knows why the loan was made.
Well, could you get back to Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So we can continue with the business of the county. And you could get back to Mr. Chair and copy the board, please. Thank you.
I have nothing for, thank you.
Okay, I attended the bond closings for the RSW jail and the county. Also attended Lord Fairfield Soil and Water Conservation District's annual award luncheon. And we had two people from our county that had received awards. One was Teacher of the Year and the other was for Farm of the Year. So it's nice to know that there are some good things taking place in the county. The conservation teacher here is Kara Luwawen, not Luwawen. And the conservation farm award went to Gregory L. Huson. So it's nice to know that good things do happen. Attended the building committee meeting and Mr. Fox, whatever, so many items, but it was fifteen plus items that are ongoing in the county. And Mr. Fox, you did a nice job holding it together and doing it in a timely manner. I really appreciate the way you ran that meeting. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. This afternoon, I attended our community policy management team and we, I introduced Ms. Cheryl Colors to some of our members. She attended the meeting, except the case specific. And there's always something to be done for children in need of children's services. Again, welcome Cheryl Colors to the Board of Supervisors for coming here. Thank you.
Carter.
Nothing other than, you know, this time of year where you're using fireplaces, using your furnace. Fortunately, we've had a spade of house fires here recently. So I think it's really important that people have their chilies cleaned properly and also service your furnace. And that's all I have at this point.
Mr. Stanley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a few items to report on. Development review committee met on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Committee discussed projects in the county, including rezoning and conditional use permit applications for sixty-four, seventy-five Winchester Road for the three hundred and twenty-four thousand square foot warehouse facility. That is on tonight's agenda, if we're public hearing both items. Also, Backroom Brewery's event facility CUP application, which is on the agenda. Site plan submitted for multi-tenant building in place of a former Capital One Bank building, a river and commons that are looking at potentially a couple of restaurants, at least two restaurant locations in that building. And the London Exxon parking lot expansion. Committee also discussed town projects, including approach sheets, convenience store, and gas station on one Shendoe Avenue, proposed daycare at the Front Wall Business Park, potential locations for the House of Hope, an update on Lickron Parkway completion as far as erosion of sofa control and EQ compliance, and an update on community development block grant projects. The committee will meet again on November twentieth, so tomorrow at ten a.m. here at Government Center. Finance Department, Warren County is still advertising to build position of finance director. In the meantime, the county has contracted with the Berkeley Group to bring in Jim Allender. Jim, if you would stand and just be recognized. Jim is retired CPA, has worked over thirteen years as finance director previously at Rockingham County. And we anticipate him being with the county at least two to four months or until we can get the position filled and complete the transition. Thanks again, Jim, for being here. On bond refinancing, I mentioned the totals, the final totals that earlier, again, six million, forty-seven thousand for the RSW Regional Jail and five point two million for county. A lot goes into, Mr. Chairman, you were there to sign the documents, but a lot of work goes into getting through the entire refunding process. I want to thank staff in county administration, county attorney's office, particularly Jim Woody, folks at Davenport, and staff at Sanz Anderson for helping us navigate that process. Tourism committee met on October ninth. The committee discussed recent advertising initiatives, including Blue Ridge Outdoors, Southern Living, and Golf Style Magazine, as well as sign maintenance for the Civil War Trails program. The final wayfinding sign of design was presented to the committee. Destinations have been sent to the consultant and the project is continuing to move forward. The committee discussed details of the proposed tourism grant program and the committee is continuing to explore joint tourism ideas to expand upon the town's initiatives. Full tourism committee will meet again on December the eleventh. Solid waste, I wanted to report the county's holiday schedule as follows. The county sites, transfer station will be closed on Thanksgiving Day. Christmas Eve will have an early closure, will be open, I believe, seven a.m. to twelve p.m. Christmas Day will be closed. For the convenience sites, Thanksgiving Day, they'll be closed, will have open top containers available for residents, dispose of household bag waste. Christmas Eve will have regular hours of open till seven and Christmas Day will be closed. Again, will have open tops available for folks that need to clean out the house. I don't know when we can get stuff out of the house. Last few items, again, as everyone knows, Morgan Fort Bridge has been closed as of October eighth for BDOT and contractors to repair the southern approach. Today learned that we're still on schedule, we hope for a December opening, having that project completed as long as the weather holds out. So I just put that footnote on it, but hopefully by mid-December, that site will be open. Richardson Road, Mr. Fox and Mr. Murray, I think it's in your district, but aren't you, it's pretty close to you out there?
Yeah.
I think that project has been completed and opened up. I have not had a chance to ride it myself, but it looked pretty good.
All right.
And in commercial projects, Taco Bell is still under construction. I saw it on the day of landscaping day, they're getting close. And two public hearings tonight on the warehouse project and then the Katie Springs project. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman, is there any questions?
Is there anyone have any questions for Mr. Stanley? If not, Mr. Hand, do you have anything to report?
We have closed the library transaction, that's all finished. And we've got a couple litigation projects, but otherwise caught up with anything that cuts me back on.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hand? If not, we'll move on to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of November sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Move for approval minutes of November sixth, twenty nineteenth.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the meeting? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next is the appropriation and transfers. That's how you met?
Can we approve the appropriations and transfers?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval of accounts. Let us to pleasure.
I move that we approve the accounts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is moving L up forward, which is the request to reconsider motion to postpone discussion of hiring a legal counsel, Warren County Board of Supervisors, county administrator, former county attorney. Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir. I made a motion at the October first meeting to postpone the decision on hiring legal counsel regarding criminal charges until the December meeting, which was a morning meeting. A number of citizens have indicated dissatisfaction with discussing that issue at a morning meeting as people work. In addition, since that time, the criminal charges have now all been dismissed. Therefore, I move that we discuss the hiring of legal counsel, which is now a reimbursement request at this time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that with respect to any reimbursement for legal services that may be approved by the Board of Supervisors at this meeting, that the county adopt by reference the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which exempts legal services from competition as the county's procurement policy. And that the Virginia Public Procurement Act supersede the prior county policies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
No.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that RCA Fox be reimbursed by the county for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by him in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed in an amount of two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby disclose with respect to the reimbursement of legal fees and expenses incurred by me in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed that I have a personal interest in and will benefit from such reimbursement to me. Hereby disclose my personal interest and have disqualified myself from voting and acting in any way on behalf of the county with respect to the transaction.
Ms. Mounds, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Lavis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
No.
Mr. Fox?
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Daniel Murray Jr. be reimbursed by the county for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by him in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Mounds? Aye. I hereby disclose with respect to the reimbursement of legal fees and expenses incurred by me in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed that I have a personal interest in and will benefit from such reimbursement to me. I hereby disclose my personal interest and have disqualified myself from voting and acting in any way on behalf of the county with respect to this transaction.
Before we vote, I'd say it's a lot of money, eight thousand, two fifty. Two thousand, yeah.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sayre?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Abstain.
Ms. Lavis?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Leonard P. Flavas be reimbursed by the county for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by her in defense of criminal charges that have been dismissed in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents.
Correct. We will not have any outbursts in this meeting. There is to be decorum so we can complete our business.
Yes. We're here. What was the amount? Speak up.
Fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents.
How can they all be different?
Just to say that some, some of the, some of the attorneys were engaged earlier, they did a lot of the research. Some of the attorneys came on at a later date and most of the research had been done and that's what, how it came to be is a different amount.
Can we have a roll? Sir, a second? Sir, a second. Do we have a roll?
I hereby disclose with respect to the reimbursement of legal fees and expenses incurred by me in the defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed that I have a personal interest in and will benefit from such reimbursement to me. I hereby disclose my personal interest and have disqualified myself from voting and acting in any way on behalf of the county with respect to the transaction.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Lavis?
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayre?
No.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I knew that Tony Carter be reimbursed by the county for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by him in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby disclose with respect to the reimbursement of legal fees and expenses incurred by me in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed that I have a personal interest in and will benefit from such reimbursement to me. I hereby disclose my personal interest and have disqualified myself from voting and acting in any way on behalf of the county with respect to the transaction.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sayre?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Ms. Lavis?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Abstain.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Douglas P. Stanley be reimbursed by the county for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by him in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Mr. Carter?
Just to point out one thing, within the administrator's contract as well as the county contract or the county attorney's contract, it is stated in there that they would be reimbursed for legal defense or, or legal expenses. I think it's important too, with respect to the board members, that this is not just an effect to this board, this has implications statewide, countywide, for elected officials, countrywide, and also for appointed officials. That when it comes down to it, if you expect the elected officials or the appointed officials to have to pay out of their pocket for charges that wind up being dismissed, I think you're gonna preclude a lot of people from stepping forward and serving their communities. On the other hand, if people weren't guilty, that would be another matter, they should be responsible for their expenses. But having said that.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Lavis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayre?
No.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Daniel Witten be reimbursed by the county for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by him in defense of the criminal charges that have been dismissed in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sayre?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Lavis?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything to be told or discussed? Hearing none?
I like the consent agenda to be approved, Mr. Stanley.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will take a five-minute recess. Public hearing will start at seven thirty. We have four minutes. Now seven thirty, we are back in session. Next item of business is public hearings. The first item, R two oh one nine dash oh nine oh one, Equus Capital Partner Limited. Ms. Logan.
This is a request to amend the Warren County zoning map and rezone approximately twenty point five eight acres from agricultural to industrial. The property is located on Route three forty-five, twenty-two North in Winters Court. Address is sixty-four, seventy-five Winchester Road and identified on tax map four as parcel forty-five. The applicant is proposing to construct a three hundred and twenty-four thousand square foot warehouse and distribution facility. They are also requesting a conditional use permit for a building in excess of fifty thousand square feet to be located within the limits of the county's Highway Corridor of the Lake District. The application states that the number of full-time employees will be a hundred, total over two shifts. They are estimating a twelve to fourteen month build-out with construction beginning in spring, two thousand and twenty. They have submitted a generalized development plan, which is in your packets. The future land use map and the existing comprehensive plan does identify this area to be zoned industrial. This is the site just north of the jail property. The applicant has submitted a proffer statement to our department with the application. We do have a signed copy of that. They include information on development and use of the property, including signage, architectural renderings, and landscaping, transportation, and a fire and rescue contribution. And we do have a letter of approval from BDOT. Throughout the planning commission process, the applicant did revise their proffer statement to include a seventy-five thousand dollar payment at the time of the issuance of a building permit for the structure to be used for the construction of a southbound left turn lane onto Fairground Road from Winchester Road. And they also proffered the right-of-way along the front of the property for the future road winding and sloping drain adjustments, which is on the county's corridor plan, transportation plan. So we do have a letter of approval from BDOT for that. And the rezoning was recommended by the planning commission and forwarded to the board. All adjoining property owners have been notified and the application has been properly advertised. And I'll review all the conditions at the next public hearing for the conditional use permit. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, the applicant's attorney is there.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. Would the applicant care to speak at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Foote and I am with the law firm of Walsh-Kalouchi. I have been representing Equus in this matter throughout. As I was driving out here this evening, I realized As I was driving out here this evening, I realized that while I've not been here a lot recently, I've been coming out here now for a quarter of a century, working in the town and the county. And I must say, it's always a pleasure to come out here. The staff is superb, and it's just a pleasure to be visiting with the people in the county. I have been representing Equus in matters involving their construction activities now since 2007. And just to give you a sense of what they've been doing, although they've not been doing it here in the county until now, with this project, should the board be so inclined, they will have built three million square feet of warehouse facilities just in the lower valley in the last few years since 2007. A great deal of that is up in Frederick County, where they've got about a million eight hundred thousand square feet, and Stonewall Industrial Park and three hundred thousand square feet that's under construction now in Greystone. They have a four hundred thousand square foot building in Shenandoah County and in that tradirous portion of Virginia that left us in 1863. Over in Berkeley, West Virginia, they have a three hundred and fifty thousand square feet facility that I'm kind of counting in the numbers that I've just given you. This building is three hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet, and we know, Taryn, how difficult I find this here, pushing these little buttons. Let's see if I can do this. We all know where the property is. We have attempted to satisfy the concerns of the properties immediately to our north. At the public hearing of the planning commission, where I think, I don't remember if you were told this, the planning commission did recommend unanimously that this project be approved, there was concern about, well, just people moving from property to property. And so there was a request that a fence be constructed, and so that was in fact agreed to. There will be a property fence along the side of the property. We don't expect a great deal of trouble from our neighbors to the south. They don't get out and about very much, so we don't expect to see them. The access to the property is going to be not off of 34522, but in fact, it's going to be off of Winters. You have to come down Fairground and then through here. The trip generation off of this is actually quite low because of the nature of the use. This is not going to be a high-intensity warehouse facility. Several reasons, not the least of which is that the parking that's available at this is low enough that's going to keep the numbers of vehicles down and the uses there. But you've heard, we estimate that this is likely to produce about a hundred full-time jobs in two shifts, as she indicated there. The biggest concern that they had, we had, was up at the southbound lane in VDOT, and the county did ask for a contribution to extend that should that be required at some point, and were satisfied when cash was made available for that purpose. This just shows you what you already know, and that is that that's the subject property. That whole area is planned for industrial development. A good deal of it is in fact already zoned industrially. The property immediately to the north, though I believe there's a residence, is already zoned commercially. This property is anomalous in the sense that it's still zoned agriculturally because there's a home on it. Ms. Blanchard's home, but Ms. Blanchard has it under contract to Equus. This is the GDP. It's very straightforward. Maybe one of the only oddities of it, as you will notice, there is a sewer line right through the middle of the park. That sewer line will be relocated. That's already been discussed with engineering, and that can be done, a big shift that'll take a center of the property so that it doesn't interfere with the development. Also out here, property will be dedicated to the purposes of widening the road in the future. We don't know how long in the future that will be, but when that time comes, there you go, right away. Circulation is acceptable throughout. This is mostly so that truck traffic doesn't have to make any difficult turns around here because there'll be some large trucks involved, of course, but all of them can do without having to back up and turn around and make difficult turning movements. The project is, of course, in direct proximity to the inland port. In fact, we call it the inland port proximity project, or something to that silly effect. And one of the reasons that this makes it for a very ideal location is among the people who have sought users, who have sought to work with Equus are several. For example, Rubbermaid, Home Depot, and Mercury Paper, all of whom are tenants of Equus properties elsewhere, but who sought a location here but didn't have one available, and so therefore had to go to other facilities, for example, in Shenandoah. So if the facility had been located here, they would in fact have chosen to be here closer to the inland port, and it's a great value as a location for this kind of a facility. I don't know that I need to answer any more or present anything more about the project because it is quite straightforward, and maybe you've got a busy agenda after me. So I'm pleased to answer any questions you may have. I have with me this evening John Knopf, who's been away, hasn't he? John is actually the face of Equus. He works for him out of Philadelphia. And many of you may know Benny Dunlap, who is the engineer, who drew that. More importantly, he's the one that figured out how to make it work. Any questions you may have, Mr. Murray, member of the board? I'm pleased to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
Perhaps just wanted to... You're proposing a proffer to build another lane at the Fairground Road. Will the quantity satisfy for that, or will that proffer happen when the lane is built?
When the lane is built. We may ask the property... What we've done is maybe look property available for it when they come to and build. When they build through there, Ms. Fox, it's going to be a major project. So with VDOT's coming through, their biggest issue is always right-of-way acquisition. And what we've done is we've made the right-of-way free.
Okay.
Is that on 522 or...?
522, yes.
Yes, so this question's...
I'm not sure if I heard you correctly, but you said, is it one hundred full-time jobs on two shifts, or is that...
That's the estimate. Now, understand, Mr. Sayer, that this is a speculative project. That's what all of the Equus buildings have been historically. All of the Equus buildings have been built and filled before they were lit away they are. We don't know who's going to come to this facility. What we know is the type of entity that does come here. So that estimate is based on past experience, but that's what we said.
So the pay scale of the workers is, you don't know...
If Mr. Knopf knows, he could tell you, but we just don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly.
It could be, we have... For example, who are the users up in Stonewall?
Warehouse users or...
John, would you please come up this because you're not on...
Not at the moment. Hi, John Knopf, at Equus Capital Partners. So warehouse employees, on average, depending on what position they have, anywhere from ten dollars an hour to twenty dollars an hour. So there's a fairly large range there, and then you, of course, have managerial employees who may make more than that.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant or state?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing, none?
Public hearing?
Yeah. Is there anyone? Public hearing is open. Does anyone care to speak at this time? Is there anyone signed up?
Mr. Paul Gabbard, sign up.
Gabbard?
Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley View Drive. The fifty to a hundred jobs sounds really good, but I've seen companies come in here and not go anywhere near what they said the jobs would be. What is the county, the recourse the county can do if no more than fifty jobs come in or twenty-five jobs come in? What can be done? Can that be put in a contract? If it's a guaranteed fifty to a hundred, it should be put in a contract if that's how many employees will be hired. If it's only ten employees, there's plenty of jobs in front of the world for ten people. The sewer line relocation, who will be responsible if this section fails in the next five years? Are the taxpayers going to be responsible for it anyhow? Those are the only two things that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak at this?
I just saw this. Bring the mic to the clerk.
I'll make sure I never hear that again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else care to speak at this time? Anyone else care to speak during the final call? Public hearing is now closed. What is the proffer?
Mr. Chairman, finding that the requested rezoning is appropriate for the public necessity and is good zoning practice, I move that the board supervisors approve the applicant's request to rezone and change the zoning map classification of the property identified on Tax Map Four lot forty-five from agricultural aid to industrial run.
And we have Mr. Fox as a second. Is there any further discussion amongst us?
Just a couple of things. My understanding is the water and sewer that is provided by the town, the system is the town's, so you all are working with the town in order to relocate? And as the previous gentleman said, if there was a problem, that would be between you and the town?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Has the, maybe Taryn Lovin, has the town said anything about the sewer line issue?
They've been working with the applicant from probably since July. It originally went to them in July. Actually, the applicant contacted the town before they even started this process to see if that was doable. And then tomorrow, we have at our Development Review Committee, the engineers coming to meet with VDOT, the town, everyone to go over their, the site plan before it's submitted. But the town Public Works Department has been in the know since the beginning, I guess.
Is the building going to be constructed over the sewer line? Is that the idea?
No, right now, it does go through the metal, but it's not getting around.
Is there anything else?
I'd like just to mention, and Mr. Gabbard brought up a good point. I was almost going to add that whether there are zero jobs, you know, what do we do, so... At times, you know, when we have companies come in, we, you know, we hear a lot of dog and pony, you know, shows. It would be nice to make sure that there is, you know, fifty to a hundred jobs, a hundred jobs, you know, that's important to our community.
There's no other comments? Ms. Mouse, can we have a vote?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Second on the public hearing, conditional use permit, 2019-0901, request capital partnership limited for a building in excess of fifty thousand square feet to be located in Route 34522 Highway Carter Overlay District. Ms. Logan?
This is a request for a conditional use permit for a building in excess of fifty thousand square feet to be located within the limits of the county's Highway Corridor Overlay District. As you know, the county does have an overlay district in this area that it overlays the underlying zoning district. It spans one thousand feet from the right-of-way on each side of 34522 North, and it does require a conditional use permit for any building of this size within the limits. With that conditional use permit and the overlay district, it addresses different architectural details. You have to break up the mass of the building of this size with the building materials, landscaping, and overall appearance of the development. As the applicant's attorney stated, that this site will be accessed off of Winters Court in the rear of the property. The planning commission recommended several conditions if the board is going to approve of this request. A site plan shall be prepared and approved by the Warren County Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit showing the building, parking, outdoor lighting, trash receptacle, signage, and other applicable zoning requirements. The exterior facade of the building shall meet the county's Highway Corridor Overlay District requirements. All mechanical equipment shall be shielded and screened from public view and decided to be perceived as an integral part of the building. The applicant shall comply with all town front royal, VDOT, Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and applicable regulations and requirements. Property shall be developed using the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation's Technical Bulletin Number Two, Hydraulics Modeling and Cars, as referenced by DEQ. Access to the site will be provided off of Route 800 Winters Court, and a solid fence will be installed along the northern property line as a buffer in a location approved by the Warren County Planning Department. That was what Mr. Foote was talking about, about the fence. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The public hearing has been properly advertised, and all adjoining properties were notified.
Public hearing is now open. Would the applicant care to speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman, John Foote again. I would only say that the applicant accepts all the conditions.
Has anyone signed up, Smouse?
No, sir.
Anyone care to speak on this issue? Anyone care to speak during the final call? This public hearing is closed. What is the closing report?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board supervisors approve the conditional use permit request for Equus Capital Partnership LTD for a building in excess of fifty thousand square feet in size to be located in the county's Highway Corridor Overlay District with the conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
Is there any further discussion before we move on? If not, Ms. Mouse, can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's passed. Next, item three is...
Is there something more with our speakers?
Yeah, they're making a noise. Next is Z. 2019-0901, ordinance to amend the Reordained Section 180-49 dot three and 180-21 of the Warren County Code on unusual and customary activities associated with microbreweries. Joe Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attached, you'll find the proposed amendment to 18049 dot three and add Section 18021 D. 42. Do apologize in your cover sheet, it might say forty-one, it is forty-two. It has been corrected, it is correct in your packet as well. And this would be part of the Warren County zoning ordinance. This section of the ordinance was originally added in 2013, and since then, we have seen an increase in interest in local breweries, and they do have an impact on our local economy and agritourism. So the proposed amendments are similar to those that are currently approved and part of the ordinance in the Farm Winery Code, and it is consistent with what the state will allow. And it allows events associated with the use, and it also allows larger events through a conditional use permit process. Attached, you'll find this ordinance and our staff recommendations. I will forego reading the entire code section, but we'll give a copy to the clerk. Again, it's consistent with our Farm Winery section that's already in here, and it does, again, address and allow, you know, usual customary events that come with wineries. We just felt, again, anything over a hundred has a substantial impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and that's where the CUP process comes in at over a hundred. It has been properly advertised. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
This public hearing is now open. Would the applicant care to speak at this time?
There's no applicant for... This is the text amendment, and then the following item is the CUP.
Okay. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, Dave Downs.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Dave Downs, 160 Old Brown Town Road. I want to speak in favor of this proposal and the subsequent conditional use permit requested by Backroom Brewery. As a brief background, I am the founder of Virginia Beer Museum, the only state beer museum in the entire country, and also the recipient of the first saloon license in Virginia since nineteen sixty... since 1916. As a matter of full disclosure, Billy Clifton was a member of our board when we originally began the Virginia Beer Museum over three years ago. She was an inspiration, she was a visionary, she was a pioneer. She was one of those brave individuals that wanted to try something different that essentially required your assistance back in 2013. I would like to briefly place this in historical context, going back to the golden age of taverns and breweries of the 1770s, where the United States Marine Corps was founded in Hunts Tavern, Philadelphia, where the seeds of rebellion and revolution were in the green room at Riley's Tavern, when the House of Burgesses was forced out and discussed the need to do something different, where we had the Tea Party formulated in the Green Dragon Tavern in Boston. In our very existence in Warren County, it began in 1836 at Lane's Ordinance, also known as Lane's Tavern. That's where people came together. Granted, it was frequently over a beer, but that's how we discuss ideas. I'm certain, Mr. Sayer, that's not beer, but nevertheless, I appreciate the endorsement.
Which you never know.
Unfortunately, people frequently dismiss these places with pejorative terms such as "a beer joint." That is clearly not the case and certainly short changes the importance that these breweries, taverns provide our community, our Commonwealth, our nation. Virginia can claim approximately $1.4 billion in impact to the economy from the craft brewery industry, which was 25 years ago, one craft brewery, legend of Richmond, Virginia. It is a growth industry. We just displaced 1st Carolina as 13th, now we're 12th in the nation. We were behind the curve because we didn't jump into the need to change legislation to enable the breweries to succeed as they did, and that didn't take place until 2012 with the passage of Sentinel 604. To put in context how awesome Ms. Clifton has been, it was in 2013 that she came to this very same board and said, "We would like to do a farm brewery." That was before the passage of the 2014 Farm Brewery Act, and it's in your materials. That was Sentinel 430, Farm Brewery Act passed. It created a new limited brewery license for breweries that manufactured less than 15,000 barrels of beer per calendar year and located on a farm in Virginia. Now, this is the language that I really wish everybody appreciated because it's in your package. It is the policy of the Commonwealth to preserve the economic vitality of the Virginia beer industry. That's our General Assembly codifying in the code, and that's Virginia Code 152228.3: 1 Sub-A, the importance of the brewery industry. I'm not suggesting that people should go out and, "Well, if you don't drink beer, you shouldn't like this passage." It's good for the community. It provides jobs in the community, it gives back to the community, it gives us something to be proud of. Look at our local communities adjacent to us. Frederick County now has almost, I think, five breweries, working on six. Loudoun, I think, boasts 30 breweries. Microbreweries are an asset to the community. This board has recognized that already. Last year, you went in with a joint grant with the Commonwealth, and I reviewed those terms, they seem very fair, and everybody wins. You have an asset in the community, a million-dollar building, that you get to collect taxes on, generate jobs from, everyone benefits, and this is not easy work. I can say from some personal experience, this is done primarily as a labor of love and a way to give back to the community. Final note, stay the course. You've been consistent and repeatedly recognize the importance of this new industry. Please, please do not follow the conduct, the actions of the town council, where I've been in litigation for almost two years, wanting to use my own property to make for a tourist destination. And this is a quick note that was done at no cost to the town. I know this is not the body to express these concerns to, but I want you to be like the county, stay like the county, not be like the town. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Mouse, is there anyone else?
No one else has signed up.
Anyone else care to speak at this time on the zoning amendment? Anyone else care to speak at this time? This partial is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm in the proposed zoning ordinance amended in accordance with the public necessity and convenience. Given the overall fair and good zoning practice, I move that the board supervisors approve the proposed amendment.
Second. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, I want to make a statement. Ms. Clifton was a visionary. She took on a task that not many people would be willing to take on. She was the first in this county to go after microbrewery. Not many people can live their dream. She's living her dream, and we need to support her, every one of us. We should look at her as a leader, because she has done more than many, many people, and she gives from her heart to the community. So, Ms. Clifton, thank you very much for what you do. Ms. Mouse, can we have a vote, please?
Can I mention, listening to your statement, I've been out to see Ms. Clifton's facility. It's been an Amish-built facility, it was beautiful. I'd like to just mention, I was on the council with David when Mr. Downs came and you spoke, and I think it was about the afternoon, and you were complaining that, you know, that you didn't get money for your Virginia brewery. And I can tell you, if I had that vote back with that swap, if I had known that afternoon would still be there today, and all the difficulties, I would not have voted for that.
Could we stay with the county side of the question?
I am, Mr. Murray.
Thank you. My turn. Is there any other discussion? If not, Ms. Mouse, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next, conditional use permit 2019-0902, Backroom Brewery LLC for events associated with the microbrewery. Ms. Logan?
So, Ms. Clifton with Backroom Brewery is requesting a conditional use permit in order to use her brewery facility to host larger events such as weddings, reunions, company outings, birthday parties, and other large events. Property is located on Ridgemont Road off of Reliance Road. It's approximately 20 acres in size and zone agricultural. In the packet, you have a statement of justification from Ms. Clifton. She explains that she does wish to utilize the 8,000-square-foot building that was recently constructed on her property for these larger events. She currently has seating in the building that she uses for beer tastings for her microbrewery, and she continues to use the other structure on her property for the brew pub and restaurant. There currently was not a listed use in the agricultural zoning district for this, which is why planning staff has put together the amendment that you all just approved. And now, this would allow for events of over 100 people. The conditional use permit would allow for her to do larger events on the property. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the conditional use permit with four conditions. The applicant shall submit a sketch to the Planning Department showing the parking area for employees and guests. The applicant shall meet all VDOT and Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements. Any outdoor lighting fixtures shall be full cutoff and pointed downward, and parking for the event center shall be located a minimum of 50 feet from Reliance Road. Ms. Clifton did work with her neighbors to address any concerns that they had during the public hearing. I think you all have those minutes. The public hearing, this public hearing is properly advertised and adjacent property owners were notified, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Clifton is here as well.
Public hearing is now open. Would the applicant care to speak?
I'd be happy to answer questions.
Come forward, please.
Well, it seems I keep getting surprised by people who want to speak at these public hearings. As you know, I had two of my neighbors show up at the Planning Commission public hearing and voiced their concerns. I was totally unexpected that to happen, and I've addressed their concerns, which I can detail to you if you'd like. Neither was I expecting the show of support from Mr. Downs. Thank you so much, sir. And Mr. Murray, thank you, Mr. Murray, Mr. Sayer. At points during the history of Sunflower Cottage Turb Farm and Backroom Brewery, the county has shown support at different points, and that is very much appreciated. I do come before you now to, I guess, remind you that we already hold two conditional use permits. The first one is for our farm, Sunflower Cottage, which allows us to bring in products that we don't grow or manufacture ourselves and resell them. And the second one is the brew pub conditional use permit. The one that we're applying for tonight is, as you know, very new. We're trying to remain in compliance with all county ordinance and permit requirements. We've agreed to all the conditions that the Planning Commission has proposed. We resolved issues with our neighbors' concerns, and we're proud of what we've done over the years and look forward to many more years of making Warren County proud of us and raising revenue for Warren County. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer questions.
Is there any other questions for the applicant?
You've definitely set up for letting events and things. I thought you already were doing that.
Well, we have done the smaller parties, so this is for the 100 guests or more.
Are you going to be growing hops again this year?
Yes, we're going to hope for a little bit drier climate. Our hops don't enjoy the wet, humid, dark weather, but we're hoping for next year, yes.
And you're going to advertise your hops, what you've done before?
Yes.
That is something that the public should go out and see. If you've never seen a hop, she allows you to come out, they cut the vines, you rip the hops off. It's good for the children to see, not just the adults, because it's a learning experience.
It's good for the children to see where all kinds of plants that we consume come from. They come from farms.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, Ms. Mouse, is anyone...
Mr. Downs didn't want to speak again.
Yeah, my former office.
I didn't know, no one else has signed up.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Second call, anyone care to speak? Third final call. This public hearing is now closed. Thank you. What is your pleasure?
I move that the board supervisors approve the conditional use permit request of Backroom Brewery LLC for events and activities associated with microbrewery, with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission itself.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
The ayes have it, it passes. Next item, item five, R2019-10-01, request of the Frank Royal Warren County Economic Development Authority to rezone property located off of Reliance Road. Ms. Logan?
The applicant is requesting to amend the Warren County zoning map and rezone approximately two acres from residential one to commercial, and approximately 0.85 acres of the adjacent unnamed right-of-way areas to commercial. Property is located off of Reliance Road near the intersection with Winchester Road, identified on tax map 12A, Section 1, Block 13, as lots 1 through 14, and located in the North River Magisterial District. Property was formerly the estate of Lilian Eastep. The EDA purchased this property in 2016. There were several trailers on the property that have since been removed, and the property is now vacant. This two-acre property abuts a nine-acre property that contains the ruins of the former Robert McKay Jr. House and outbuildings that's currently owned by the town and county jointly, and it also abuts a 3.4-acre parcel owned by the town that contains the McKay Springs and a 0.95-acre parcel on the corner of Winchester Road and Reliance Road that's owned by the town and county. Those maps are in your packet. Those parcels were all zoned commercial in 2012 with proffers preserving the historic elements of the property and also transportation proffers. The EDA is requesting this rezoning because there has been serious interest in commercial development of the property over the past year and more so recently. The two-acre parcel and right-of-way areas are still zoned residential at this point and are located in the middle of the commercial land. I do have a signed proffer statement from the Economic Development Authority that is very similar to the proffer statements on the adjoining land for the town and county. The proposed zoning of this property is in conformance with the future land use map, which identifies this area specifically for commercial land uses. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. All of the related information is in your packet. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning, and the public hearing has been properly advertised and all adjacent property owners were notified.
This public hearing is now open. Would the applicant care to speak, meaning the EDA? Come up forward, please.
Okay, no, well, yeah, obviously we need support for rezoning. It'll make it consistent with the other parcels of the area. The proffer statements, as Terran said, are very similar as well. We do have prospect for the property, and we're anxious to see it get in the private hands, get on the tax rolls, and generate some employment.
The only thing I want to say is I'm a personal friend of Fred McKay and his wife. He takes a real interest in the McKay properties in Warren County, and he had expressed a concern about dehistorical preservation, but that's been addressed in here, and I thank you for that. But I needed to come full disclosure that I know the McKay family. Okay, understood.
Who's this 2.03 acre tract? Who owns that tract?
That is the EDA.
EDA? Because I remember we got a work session a month years ago when we bought that property. So who gets the proceeds from us? The county. The county, well? Okay. Yep. The county gets the money from when it sells, and when it sells is a good deal.
Any other questions, comments?
Is this in the quarter that was meant to be commercial? That land court that somebody else did that?
This is a piece of property where a trail was drawn, correct? Where you see the line in it.
Nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, we did have a McKay family representative come to the Planning Commission meeting. You don't have those minutes yet, because it was just last week. And we've been speaking to him since. He sent us a lot of information, and he seemed happy that we addressed his concerns during the meeting, so it was good to have him there.
This doesn't touch any of that property that was, there's a map that shows the McKay house and the springs and all that. That doesn't touch it.
It's the adjoining property. This property is vacant.
Okay, if we have no other questions, public hearing is now open. Has anyone signed up to speak, Ms. Mouse?
No, sir.
Is there anyone that would care to speak at this time?
I'd like to speak.
Come up forward, please.
Harold Bagley, 327 Liberty Hall Road, Trumbull, Virginia, 22630. I've got one question. Why was this property bought to start with as one of the used by the EDA? Why are you trying to sell it now? Why was it held all that time? There's a lot of answers that needs to come up front and be told why. You all got an explanation? I'll bring this gentleman back up here and let him ask. I can give a shot at that.
Actually, we're not supposed to answer questions. We can get an answer to you. They have your address and get an answer to you.
Maybe we can get that answered, what, on Thursday, the courthouse?
Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time?
I'm not sure. I heard two different things. The property that is going to be rezoned is where the chimney is at, the trailers were at. Is that correct?
Where the trailers were at.
Yeah, and there's just the chimney itself.
The chimney's only joint.
Okay. Okay. And which one of those properties has the underground spring? If anybody could answer.
That's an adjoining property.
That's an adjoining.
So the underground spring isn't affected by this piece of property?
It is not on this property, correct. This property is vacant.
Okay.
This is where the trail, that's flat piece of property, doesn't go across.
I would just think for that spring to be.
Destroyed.
Destroyed, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Please.
Yeah, I just want to say the proffers speak to Stormwater Management and ensuring that nothing happens to the spring, and I'm sure will be engineered with that in respect.
Anyone else care to speak? The second call, anyone else care to speak? Third and final call. Public hearing is now closed. Any questions?
Finding that the request to rezon is appropriate for a public necessity is good zoning practice. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the applicant's request to rezon and change the zoning map, classification of property identified on tax map 12A, section one, block 13, as lots one through 14, and the adjacent unnamed right-of-way areas shown on the plat by Racine, dated March 10, 2010, from residential one, R1, to commercial city.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Lattis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
The ayes have it, it passes. Item six, Z. 2019-10-01, ordinance to amend and re-ordinate sections 180-8, 180-28, and 180-49 of the Warren County Code, landscaping and order of cultural services. Mr. Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is attached proposed amendment to section 18028 by adding 18028B20 of the Warren County zoning ordinance, in addition, adding a definition of landscaping and horticulture services to 180-8 and include supplemental regulations pertaining to such use. Our office frequently meets with landscapers looking to start their own business, sometimes out of their home to really get going, and as those businesses grow, they're kind of limited in where they can go within the county. And we felt that these amendments and additions fit that industrial zoning district, given that it provides appropriate screening and operations that would not adversely affect any adjoining property owners. The attached amendment with staff recommendations is included, and we've also just wanted to state that we also mirrored, we have a firewood processing operation ordinance that has some of these. We also talked with the fire marshal about setbacks for storage of bulk items such as mulch and firewood. So we have addressed some of those issues. I will forego reading all the code section and supplemental regulations unless you'd like, and I will give a clerk a full copy of these as well. It has been properly advertised. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Public hearing is now open. Does anyone have any questions for staff? And there's no applicant on this. Has anyone had any comments at all about it? One item, if no one does, I do, is keeping the mulch piles a great distance away from buildings, fertilizer separate from mulch piles, because we know mulch piles can ignite, and fertilizer's explosive. So I see where you've looked at those items, and I think the public should know that they've been addressed.
Correct, Karen. And again, you talked to the fire marshal, there is guidance about how you're supposed to store them, how tall mulch pile can be. There were no setback requirements to adjoining property owners through code, but we use, again, existing code to state the 100-foot setback. And again, as we said, we'll continue to work with the fire marshal moving forward with these types of uses to make sure they are appropriate.
Ms. Mouse, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Would anyone care to speak on this topic at this time? Second call, anyone care to speak? Third and final call. Public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of order?
Mr. Chairman, finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, good zoning practice, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the proposed amendment.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Mouse, one more time, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Lattis?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Moving on, Warren County Public Schools, AS Roads Elementary School renovations funding. Mr. Stanley?
Mr. Chairman of the Board, at meeting on October 15th, the Board of Supervisors approved the request to allow the county to move forward with the refunding of a principal amount not to exceed $26.5 million of the 2011 D and 2012 A Virginia Resource Authority bonds as long as certain parameters were met. The bonds did in fact meet the accepted parameters, and the bond will actually go to closing tomorrow. It is outlined in these savings that we listed earlier. The first year savings, which are on page three of the refunding summary, which are included in your packet tonight, the combined for phase one and phase two for year one, for the year, fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, is $629,191. For the attached letter, September 19, 2019, Warren County Public Schools received one bid for renovation of the AS Roads Elementary School from Lance Construction of Winchester for LCW for 5A and 264-800. The project consists of a base bid and 13 alternatives. The base bid includes creating a secure front entrance to the building, moving the office to the front of the building, making the restroom to EDA compliant, new floors, new ceiling, and ductwork for the HVAC units. The alternates for the project include replacing the flat roof system, providing case work, reconstructing the columns on the front of the building, and providing installing six HVAC units. The bid tabulation sheet is included in the packet, which included LCW's bid prices for the base bid and the alternates. Warren County Public Schools currently has $3,517,219.30 available for the renovation of the school. $2,274,416-10 is available left over for the Warren County Middle School construction project. $119,915-26 is available for the Warren County Public Schools capital improvement funds. And $1,122,887-4 is available, has been set aside in our capital funding, as outlined in my memo to the superintendent dated October 8, 2019. Warren County Public Schools will use these funds to contract with LCW to complete the items, including the base bid, the renovation of the project, and the temporarily placed modular classrooms on the property we used as classroom space. LCW's original cost for the base bid was $3,388,800. The Warren County Public Schools worked with LCW to value engineer the base bid and had negotiated a cost of $3,096,300. School board will consider the contract with LCW if the work included. They did that at their meeting earlier this evening. The next part of the renovation project they would like to implement is purchasing and installing the HVAC units. The cost of purchasing the HVAC units installation as part of the bid was $744,100. If the school system purchases and installs the HVAC units separate from the contract, they will, should be able to eliminate the contractor's markup and taxes, which would likely save 10 to 15 percent. They requested that any additional funds would be available for school capital improvements to be able to purchase those units. This time, I'm requesting that the board appropriate transfer of the $629,191 that was saved due to your decision to go ahead and move forward with the bond refunding to the public school system for the AS Roads project in order to allow them to purchase the new HVAC units for the building. I'll be happy to answer any questions, the superintendent's here as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have just one concern. It's just like it was only one being received. Nothing want to come up? And that was twice. You bid it twice, correct?
He did bid it twice, and we received one bid each time. It was, both times it was from Lance Construction of Winchester. We bid this time, we bid in the, we put the advertising bid in the Winchester Star, the Northern Virginia Daily. We bid on the state EBA system, which goes out to many contractors, and we received one bid. So it could be the timing of the bid, which a lot of five people were interested, but only one bid actually came in. So, and even up to the last date, we thought we were going to have at least two, and then the second bidder dropped out.
Oh, you were conscious that you wanted more bids, but it just didn't happen.
We did, and we personally reached out to the companies that we knew that did business in our community, and we received one bid. Okay.
I think we have to point out that you're going to purchase the HVAC units. They will not go through the contractors. It will be you guys purchasing directly from.
That's correct. That's correct.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
And do you have, did you have the mechanics to service these air conditionings that once you purchased them?
We do. We have four mechanics, or four HVAC personnel technicians on staff who would be able to service this. And actually, it'll end up saving us money, because currently we have window units, so having a one-system unit will save us money throughout the year with not having to run the window units. That's all I have to say.
If I can ask one question. Buying the units internally is a great thing to do, but if we talk to the contractor about liabilities, because the finger pointing starts when you buy and they dump, and they install by, and you get this, what I call the infantry cross rifles of everybody pointing everybody else.
Right. That's actually been part of the conversation, because what we want to do is to purchase the equipment that likely Lance, LCW, will be the people who install it, so there's not that much finger pointing. So if they revest from the manufacturer, we would do the same thing. They will deliver it on-site, and then LCW will take it from there.
Will the manufacturer come out and inspect?
They will. They will for warranty purposes. Absolutely.
I remember, I think it was the first bid, there was an issue about having light workers. They were going to work out in light, and I think that was mediated.
So if you notice, we did a base bid on this one, and we did 13 alternates, and that's because we couldn't afford it the very first time, because the bid came in a little over $6 million. This time, it was still high, it was more than what we could afford, but at least we could get started on the renovation, because LCW was able to come down to $5 million, and we are going to put modular units on the property so that we can free up most of the building, so that LCW can have the majority of the building to renovate while students are still going to school there.
Got you. And then is this going to increase the capacity for students once it's done?
It's not going to increase the capacity. It'll increase the buildings, the amount of time we're able to use the building. It'll extend the use.
I know it's needed.
It is. So the things that are left that we would still need to be done are to replace the flat roof and replace windows, which will also be a money energy saver, and the other, the casework. So there's only three things remaining. If you guys approve this request, those will be the three things that are remaining that we aren't able to do or able to afford with the renovation at this time.
Thank you.
The $629,101, that's the amount of money that's a present value that we save.
It's present value in our current budget, already budgeted for debt service, so we would be transferring and appropriating from our debt service line over to the school system to use for the renovation costs.
Is that a per-year savings?
No, if you look at the, if you look at the, I think it's, it's three. There's a per-year savings there from the summary of results, 2019 G R A Fall Pool. Look at 630, 2020, the first year is 629, next year is 364, and that number is down. The last year is in 2035, it's 221,000. It's a variable now. The total savings is 5.2 million, but this happens at first year's largest.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, then it's the pleasure of order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the appropriation of $629,191 for capital outlay. That's budget line 92000, AS7060 of Warren County Public Schools for the AS Roads Elementary School project as outlined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next, Warren County Public Schools, request for proffer funds. Mr. Stanley?
Mr. Chairman of the Board, as part of rezoning, a request, proffer funds are designated for certain purposes based on the application, just like we had a proffer as night associated with the rezoning. For residential proffers, typically, they will proffer money to offset impacts on capital facilities, including schools. The spreadsheet in your packet outlines the amounts collected and expended. A total of $1,929,970 has been collected for school proffers, and $555,684 has been expended. Current proffer balance for the schools' capital projects is currently $537,286. At this time, they're requesting appropriation of that money, and I'm also proposing, we had $196,000, I mean, we call additional hookup fee. At one point in time, Blue Ridge Shadows, their base proffer was $8,000 per unit, and they were paying $12,000, and then we lost the ability in court to collect that additional four, but we have $196,000 there in additional hookup fees. So at this time, requesting to have those transferred to the schools for the AS Roads, and also, the board of the last several fiscal years has set aside $389,601.94. Some of that is meals tax revenue that has to go towards school capital improvements. We've been slowly building that fund to be able to address the issues of AS Roads. So at this time, in total, request $1,122,887.94 to be appropriated from proffer funds and the special projects fund to the Warren County Public Schools specifically for the AS Roads project.
Sounds like we're almost there to fund this.
Close. Well, I think that, and they did a good job managing the middle school project, had too many dollars left over, that's what helped.
Did they get the eight counties' profits, don't they?
For schools, yes.
Anyone have any questions?
I was just one point. I remember 2015, that this was a big issue with citizens, their center kids at the school. I don't vote in favor of this. People really want this.
To me.
I think what we've done through the years, videoism, works in addressing, retaining AS Roads, and I think there's something in the works for L F K as far as the roof, just been trying to update our existing facilities to extend the life of them, so these are good things. It doesn't happen overnight, but it does take a while, these planning and careful consideration.
The health and safety of our students, of the young ones, is extremely important, and bringing the buildings up to today's standards extends the life of the building, but also protects our children. And we have to remember that, you know, the kids are our replacements in the near future. So we have to remember that.
I think this might be our last, is this our last elementary school to upgrade?
L F K is the last.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the request for $733,000, $286 appropriation for the proffer funds, and $389,601.94 and $389,601.94 is outlined to Warren County Public Schools for renovation of the AS Roads Elementary Schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You can pass this. Next, we are moved to a closed session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you would allow, could we go ahead and move item N above item M? Just have a public presentation coming at this point.
What's the pleasure, Board? Okay, so we have a motion. Archie will agree. That's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move general public presentation comment period to this point, then we'll go into a closed session. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Paul Gabbard.
Paul Gabbard, 1221, now if you drop. I just have a couple of comments to a couple of you all. First one is to you, Mr. Sayre. Personally, I think it was wrong for anybody to attack your family members during the campaign or deal. I personally think it was cheap and thoroughly wrong and shouldn't have been done. Do you understand that? And Mr. Murray, I, I want to think that on the warning that you bring to citizens for your health and your wife's health, I want to say that you were, I would like to say, think that you were just venting because it's one thing if, if you want to be up there and, and ruin your health, but like I told my wife, if my job did anything to hurt health, I would resign immediately. Mr. Stanley, my daughter called you not long ago to talk to you about the conditions of her road. You were very unprofessional with your answers and downright nasty to her.
What's your daughter's name, Mr.?
Megan Gabbard. The next thing is, I, I want to address Mr. Fox and Mr. Carter. Friday, we're going to court for the removal and you two are the only ones. I would like for you to, to really think about resigning before Friday comes along. I don't know what's going to happen. Who knows? But, you know, it can go either way. I know, Mr. Fox, I've talked to you. You seem to think that you could do either one. So, you know, I just implore both of you to resign before Friday. Mr. Carter, you said a little bit ago that when the vote for the, to pay the attorneys your all's fees, that it was the people that wanted to postpone. And we did not do that. We got, we were simply irritated by to bore them to death with added bond issues so they will leave before we vote on attorney fees. It wasn't us. The two charges that you all faced were bogus. That's why some of y'all came out of the sheriff's office waving your thing and smiling because you knew right then and there that these two charges were not illegal in the state of Virginia. And how they came down from a grand jury without the grand jury being told that they weren't actual charges or were actual crimes in the state of Virginia, I'll, I'll never know. Who was responsible for saying, "Those aren't charges. Those are crimes in the state of Virginia." So, you're just wasting our time. You're wasting the taxpayers' money for paying attorney fees for everybody. Disgusting. And as far as the schools are concerned of, of the last thing that was just discussed, I think before anything gets done with the schools, I think there should be some guidelines put in place, strict guidelines on bullying. Something needs to happen to these, to these young people who bully kids. I don't know what it's going to be, but something is going to open their eyes to the fact that you don't do it. And the last thing I want to do is I want to thank my wife for her hard work and dedication to the petition. She spearheaded this first through the Warren County Coalition. It was decided by a majority, majority of the people who came out for that to not continue through with it. We took it upon ourselves to go through with it. With hard work and our own personal money, it will come down to Friday. But I would still like to see, have both of you think real hard about resigning before Friday gets here. Thank you.
Ms. Mouse, anyone signed up?
I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Bonlin Holly?
My name is Bonlin Holly.
Pronounced it correctly. Thank you.
I live at 938 Betchet Road in Brown Town, Virginia, and I'm coming to bring to the board's attention a resolution of the to make Warren County a Second Amendment sanctuary for the state of public school. I have been able to forward a copy of this resolution to two of the individuals, the vice chairman and also supervisor Carter. Again, I appreciate your outreach on that. And for anyone who would like a copy of this, I will be glad to send that to you by any email. But we need to stand forth and protect the citizens here in the county of Warren to protect our rights under the Second Amendment that was given to us by our forefathers who designed the Constitution of our United States, also for the Constitution here in the state of Virginia, that we have the right to bear arms, to protect our homes, to protect our freedoms, also the ability to go forth and provide for our families in the venue of hunting. It's also a very active sport. There have been a lot of children that I have been able to work with through the years that have earned scholarships through the disciplinary action of going through programs of learning to shoot in a practical sense by learning the sport, which is a very disciplined sport as it teaches to be mindful, to be wise, to be perceptive and conscious of the decisions that they make, to also study the fort, the foundations of our nation. So, with that stated, I do submit this resolution to protect the citizens of Warren County as a Second Amendment sanctuary.
Did you have a copy of that or something? I wanted to hear copies right here. Is that on me? End notes for no one else to sign up.
The board still with? Anyone else care to speak at this time? Has to sign up.
Yes, sir. Hello, everybody. My name is Ross McVey. I live in our Front Royal. I'm retired military. 24 years in the army. Did everything you can imagine within the role of using firearms and weapons. I've used firearms as part of my lifestyle for more than 40 years. When I moved, when I retired out of the army, I moved to Virginia specifically because I didn't want to deal with some of the issues that other states had done a tyrannical aspect, taken away rights. I specifically moved to the soul and heart of freedom and liberty. I've seen things that have been going on. I am a member of the Virginia Citizens Defense League. I have been attending lobby day every year since I've been retired, except for the years I was overseas as a contractor to help protect our country. And now we have a situation, as you all well know, is unfolding. We've got a legislative body that is going to put turning on all of us. There are several bills at the state level that are going to take away rights. This was not, you know, cut any of the chains there. It's exactly. There are things that they are going to take away property rights, if I remember correctly, that I have due process. I have, you know, the rights, the own property and not just be taken away by the government. These things are all going before the legislature this coming January. Now, let's face it, it's going to happen. This time now, the only way to stand up is in places like here in Front Royal and in Warren County. Other counties have already started. I pray and hope that you will take this into consideration with becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary location. It is the only way that the citizens are going to be able to stand up to this situation. Yes, there are some absolute dangerous situations that could unfold, some of the which is without due process, somebody can decide that they don't like you. They want to come and confiscate. This is exactly what happened at Lexington and Concord. And we stood up then. We don't need to have craziness happening at this time here in this county. I've talked to several people that work in the law enforcement community. Not one of them I've ever heard that wants to be part of going door-to-door confiscation. If you don't think it's happening, it is in fact part of the bills. The governor has already said that he wants to look at the ability to do confiscation. It's up to you guys to be able to give some sort of aspect, whether it's symbolic or whatever, to state what this county is going to be and what is the morals and values of the people that live here. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here to speak?
Yep.
Harold Dagley, 327 Liberty Hall Road, Front Royal, Virginia 22630. You correct me if I'm wrong. You got one bid on this school. I understood it was due to the time factor. What is an emergency on getting this thing started? Want to put it on that burner, put it back out there and get you three bids like everybody else that's around that I've ever seen? I work for big, big contractors, something along with your junk. You ought to get that fixed instead of taking the money and waiting. Taxpayers supporting yourself. Fix this. I work for contractors. I've never heard of such a damn thing. One bid, wake up. This is no damn necessary push. Put it back out there. Pull it back until you get bids. Save the county money. Don't ramrod this damn thing through. You're doing business just like you always done. And that's why part of it is going out and hope to God Friday the rust up he goes.
Is there anyone else who cares to speak at this time? Anyone else care to speak? First final call. Presentation period is closed. We are moved to a closed session. Yes.
I move the board into the provision of section 2.2-37, 1181 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for a discussion of the provision of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, promotion, solace, resignation of specific public officer or public body. I further note that discussion limited to Northwestern Regional Juvenile Attention Center. I also move the board into a closed unit provisions of section 2.2-37, 1188 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for consultation with legal counsel regarding provisional legal rights. I further note that discussion limited to the economic development authority matter.
Mr. Stanley. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Ms. Gladys.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Mr. Sayre.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
We're moved to a closed session.